All right, Jared. All right, let's call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Nyla Frye?
Here.
Tricia Brown?
Here.
Sam Cuff?
Here.
Kristen Rungy?
Here.
Erin Moran? Joel Zisselsberger?
Here.
Robert McPherson?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is confirmation of open meeting compliance.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on 1-3. The final agenda was posted in all three official posting locations on 1-2. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on 1-2. For the audience, just two important reminders. Please be sure you sign in with your name, address, and municipality for accurate record keeping. And anyone interested in participating in public comment or public hearing, please be sure to get me the form prior to that agenda item.
All right, and public comment is next on the agenda. Do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment today?
I have no public forms.
Do we have anyone online who would like to make a public comment? No? All right, then let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items we would like pulled from the consent agenda? Not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
No, go ahead.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Next up is reports and announcements. First one is police commission. Has police commission met?
They met two weeks ago, maybe? Or right before Christmas. Interviewed candidates for an open police officer position. That was it.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, and library board?
We've also met prior to the holidays. We approved the purchase of two new study pods from our reserve fund. We updated our meeting room pricing, which was far lower than it needed to be. It hadn't been updated in some time. And we also reviewed our policy on use of meeting rooms by political organizations. And we also approved some bonuses for some of our staff.
Excellent, excellent. Wannakee Fire District?
The meeting was canceled.
All right, utilities commission?
Several different things. We talked about equipment purchases, some construction project updates, as well as well six. Some wage adjustments, the holiday lights contest, and then the most probably fun one, the WPPI survey results. There was 51 WPPI members. We took third place. And out of all of the large ones, we tied for first.
Excellent, fantastic.
Yeah.
All right, any other boards, committees, or commissions? Any other announcements?
I just have one for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The meeting will not be on Monday. It'll be on the Tuesday following, so the 21st. The regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, the 21st.
All right, thank you very much, Carla. And next item up is public hearing and discussion and action on a request by Matt Parnell to rezone 811 South Division Street from I-2 to I-1. And Todd, will you be presenting this in Lauren's absence?
Yep, I will. I'll attempt to punt as well as possible. Now, this item has gone through plan commission. Plan commission recommended approval. Staff does the same. The proposal was in your packet. The applicant is here as well. This is a change in zoning from I-2, which is generally considered a heavier industrial use, to I-1, which is a little less intense. That includes office, similar office uses, which are adjacent to this property as well. Contextually, so you know where this is at, or for the public listening, this is just a couple of paces south of Qualline Fence on the west side of Division, between Division and the creek. Staff recommends approval, and I believe this relates to the expected uses planned by the current owner. So with that, you're welcome to open the hearing.
All right, let's open the hearing at 6:04 PM. Do we have anyone who would like to address this item on the agenda for the public hearing?
I do have one public comment form from Maria Pat at 1,000 Wexford Drive, Wannakee.
I'm taking this opportunity, since this conversation goes on about South Division Street. I have driven up and down that street so many times, I can't even tell you in the 46 years that I've lived here in town. My big complaint about the entire area in there is that it's not being held to the same types of requirements as the business park, as far as what it looks like. It's messy. I don't understand right now why we have semi trucks parked in those areas all weekend. I hope that some screening is put up, some trees put up, that the parking sites are perhaps paved and not stones and sand. It's just not a very lovely area. And if that area has been allowed to be that way in grandfathering, based on the kinds of requirements that are needed for the business park, I'd like to see them get a deadline by which they have to come up to those standards for the village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Anyone online that would like to make a comment for this hearing?
I don't see any online participants.
All right, then let's close the public hearing at 6:05 PM. All right.
I know, just so you're aware, I didn't mention this earlier. The village attorney is participating virtually tonight. He's also unavailable this evening, but will be here for open session as well as your closed session tonight. So he's available if there's questions for you.
Thank you, thank you. And do our applicants have any comments that you would like to make?
May I answer any questions?
All right, well, let's see if we have any questions. Nyla?
Okay, I already spoke to Mr. Parnell. And I asked him what were the plans for the site. Could you please tell us in your own words?
And when you take the microphone, if you press the button so it turns green, we'll be able to hear you.
So for us, we'd like to develop that property, actually clean it up, turn it into a nicer, like a contractor-type space for contractor shops, offices. We have, would like the opportunity to have, if there's a chance, to have somebody that does like manufacture, or like repair of equipment or anything, that does sales on the side also, which would be allowed. That's kind of what we're shooting for. We want to clean it up, new building, new pavement, and kind of bring it up closer to what you're asking for.
Thank you. Tricia?
No specific questions. I was in part of the planning commission discussion and review of the item. I think it's a, the transition, the type of use is a good fit for that area. So I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Tricia.
No questions.
No questions here? No. Joe?
From the standpoint of zoning, I have nothing.
All right, Robert?
No concerns.
All right, I don't have any concerns either. I appreciate the time you took to come to plan commission and to put this forward. Yes, absolutely.
One general comment about the area, when you drive through there and you're trying to figure out where a property is, it's very difficult to determine. And because a possible need for emergency services, we need that area numbered somehow, with their location numbers on it. I'm surprised that this isn't done, but I just wanted to bring this up so that it can be, I don't know who takes care of this matter, but it should be taken care of that we have numbers so places can be easily located.
Okay, thank you, Nyla. We should definitely make a note of that, yeah. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the rezone at 811 South Division Street from I-2 General Industrial to I-1 Light Industrial.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for coming in tonight. Yeah. Next item on the agenda, discussion on a six-month update for Sustainable Wannakee Ad-Hoc Committee. Since Lauren is not here tonight, she's asked that we reschedule this for our next meeting. Do we need a motion to do that?
No, you don't. I would just say that the purpose for this item is because it's specified within your creation resolution of that committee, that every six months, they, the committee would provide you with an update on their activities to date. I believe that's probably a month or more overdue. But that's Lauren's intent, is to present to you the latest on the committee's activities.
All right, I know she has some material prepared for that. So rather than one of us committee members giving the update, if it's agreeable to the group, let's have her do that next time. Next item, discuss and take action on employee personnel handbook modifications. And Todd, I believe this is to you.
Yep, and I might tap a couple of shoulders around the room as we work through this. Updating the employee handbook is a project that's been in research by administration for, well, probably over a year. We're looking at the entirety of the document. As we do, there are a few policies that are jumping off the page that we would like to talk about, rather than waiting and delaying for several months until we complete a complete review. So there are four proposals this evening that we'd like, staff would like the village board to consider for immediate approval and change for the handbook. And I'll walk through, I'll walk through these four. The first one is paid parental and compassionate leave. Paid parental leave, as I described in the packet, is probably, as you've seen or heard in general workplace settings, is becoming something more expected in what you could call workplaces of choice. And what we have definitely seen is in the municipal competitive marketplace, municipalities are adding paid parental leave to their provision of benefits for employees. What is paid parental leave? That is basically, simply, it's paid leave for parenting a child and compassionate leave for loss of a child or miscarriage. And what it would do is provide, in addition to the sick leave that employees already have, are entitled to, this is a different bank of leave, specific for these purposes. And that's the nature of the change in the employee marketplace that we're seeing, is this provided benefit. So the, starting on page 20, 31 of your packet, there is a three-page policy that lays out the provision for parental and compassionate leave. To quickly summarize, for paid parental leave, that would allow up to 24 hours of paid leave to enable an employee to care for and bond with their newborn. That's one time per year. What did I say?
24.
Missing, move the decimal one point to the right. 240 hours of leave. In the case of compassionate leave, that would be 80 hours of paid leave on an annual basis, related to, again, miscarriage or stillborn. If you have other questions on the provisions, we're going to lay out the parameters, procedures for use, how to go about making use. I did discuss this and reviewed it with department heads. I received feedback and incorporated a few modifications that made sense to them in the draft that's before you tonight. So why don't I pause there and take questions that you might have on paid parental and compassionate leave?
Any questions?
Yeah. Can I go?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go.
I was excited to see this. I think paid parental leave is important for both, if there are two parents in the child's life. Compassionate leave, is that at any point of gestation? I know some organizations have to maybe be 20 weeks, or I wasn't sure if we were specifying that.
Don't?
And if it was for both parents, or if it was just the birthing parent?
Good questions. It doesn't specify what point in a pregnancy it occurs. So as far as I can tell, according to this policy, it's at any point during pregnancy. And I believe, and if my staff can help, I believe this would apply for either parent. That's correct.
Is that appropriate, then, if we're asking for medical documentation for a parent that doesn't work here? I don't know if that's normal, but like, if there was, yeah, yeah. I just wasn't sure how we would, but. I'm fine with.
Yeah, I don't, Brian's on, Brian, if you have a legal opinion on that, I, I mean, I generally would say that it, as an employer providing benefits, utilizing the protection of our HR department and confidentiality granted personal medical files, that, in my opinion, it's reasonable to ask for that information knowing that we would have confidentiality guaranteed. But I would, I know Brian's not a labor attorney, but maybe he can jump in on this, too.
I agree with you, Todd. Essentially, if somebody wants to avail themselves of the benefit, this is a reasonable request to be able to demonstrate that you meet the criteria of the benefit. And so that's why I think you can ask for it.
And so I had a follow-up question to that. So is there another mechanism by which a birthing parent would have more than 80 hours of time off? Stillborn children often occur very late in pregnancy. There is, you know, oftentimes, medical complications for the birthing parent, and also for a surrogate who might be giving birth and needing time to recover, but not have parental leave because they are legally, at that point, not considered the parent.
Yeah, so to be clear, the employees are still eligible for the full extent of both federal and state leave, as it applies to family medical leave. And Jared, can you confirm the duration that would be covered under the family medical leave provision?
Yep, so federal FMLA, this gets very distracting. Federal FMLA is 12 weeks, and Wisconsin FMLA is six weeks. Now, those run concurrently, so for all intents and purposes, 12 weeks.
And are, do we pay during that time?
No, FMLA is unpaid. Employees do have the ability to use paid leave, or if they're eligible, using our income continuation, which does have a 30-day elimination period on the front end, where they can't, they would have to use their PTO then, but then after 30 days can collect the disability.
So let's put the pieces together. This adds a method for which employees can use FMLA and be paid simultaneously. So in addition to these, either 80 or 240 hours, other accumulated leaves, such as sick leave, can be utilized. I mean, FMLA, the feds don't give us money to cover FMLA expenses. It really is simply a guarantee that they won't lose their job for that period of time, for the stated medical reason. But we're affording opportunities with this policy and the others we already have to receive a portion, if not all, of that time as paid. But there remains the opportunity for employees to take it unpaid, if they care not to use other balances, and maintain protection of their position. Did I do okay on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just wondering if I could add one, one thing with this policy proposal, is that this addresses the single biggest, I guess I would call it a gap, in our benefits package, in that total, we have a really great benefits package. Don't get me wrong at all. And our ICI benefit in particular is really good, with one exception. And that is in the case of particularly mothers, but this would obviously address both parents in the birth or adoption of a child. And the reason I say that is because our ICI policy, which again is the disability, the income continuation, that has a fixed amount of time that they pay for it, where all other disabilities pay for the duration of the disability. After the birth of a child, it's six to eight weeks. But 30 days of that six to eight weeks is not paid. And then, so employees are essentially getting two, maybe four weeks, of 75% of their pay, which, for a lot of employees, is a big ask, especially ones who are maybe a little bit newer, who don't have those balances built up. And so this is actually something that, I've been here three years now, easily the number-one concern, I would say, that's been brought up to me. And we've tried to address through other ways that we've been able to. We have some supplemental policies that are voluntary for employees. But this would address that on its own right, and would, far and away, you know, plug a pretty significant gap, I estimate, for our employees' benefit package.
So in the situation, so what I'm thinking of is, in the situation where you have a C-section, and you lose the baby, you have 80 hours of compassionate leave, two weeks of unpaid time before your 75% income continuation kicks in?
Yes, that roughly speaking, yeah, that's pretty close. You'd have two more days in there, because it's a 30-day elimination period, not a four-week elimination period. So pretty close, yeah, but you basically got it.
Okay. What would it cost us to close that gap? So that, I mean, I would hope that that would be a really rare situation, that somebody would face that, but it would be super heartbreaking.
Would that assume that there's no sick leave or vacation leave balance to use towards it?
Yeah, you're right, I am assuming that, yeah.
Can you repeat the scenario, so we make sure we're running the right?
Yeah, I think Tricia answered my question. So if you had, you'd get 80 hours of, if you had a C-section and you lost the baby?
Okay.
You know, so that you'd have technically a stillbirth. You'd have 80 hours of leave, paid for. And then, before catastrophic disability or disability kicked in, you'd have another two weeks. But I guess you could cover it with sick leave?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted, yeah. Rapping my mind around, different situations of friends of mine have had for the years, yeah.
Thank you. What it says here about surrogacy, I think that an employee serving as a surrogate is not entitled to paid leave under this policy. I question that, because any woman who loses a child under any circumstances is going to have physical and emotional issues to deal with. So to say that they are not eligible for this, it just doesn't sit very well with me.
Is there a reason that surrogates are excluded?
We looked at sample policies from other communities, and a lot of this is what is being seen, again, in the marketplace. As a policy decision of the board, you can modify that or exclude, strike that provision for non-use.
Is this the concern that many surrogates are compensated and have coverage from the family that asked them to serve as the surrogate?
I don't have, I don't have more information on that. It's possible.
Yeah, good question. Go ahead, yeah.
Well, I don't mean to be rude, but, or people that aren't the birthing parent are writing the policies. So, I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm not sure why we need to change it. I just, yeah, if there's like a gap, there's so many scenarios that, why someone would be a surrogate, and I'm not sure that we necessarily need to say you don't have any sort of assistance, because you could not be getting paid. It could be a family situation, there's so many, like, and so I'm thinking of the medical aspect of it, of like, you're, you need time to heal and recover if you are having a baby. So whether or not you are raising the baby, so, you know.
Yeah, Joe, did you have any comments?
I just wanted to clarify, in an event like, say, SIDS or something of that nature, none of this really applies at that point. We're talking bereavement, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Robert?
As a, well, it's been eight years now, but even eight years ago, this process sucked in private industry. So I'm glad to see that we're going through something here for the village staff. I'm not opposed to, if we wanted to close the gap on surrogacy, I was not trying to imply anything by that statement, other than sometimes it's processed. But otherwise, I guess, the only question that I had when I was reading through was just under the general provisions about the statement about employees not eligible for FMLA may apply for this leave, and if you provided the same job protections specified in the act. Is there any concern that that creates an imbalance for, you know, if somebody's like newly joins, and they're getting the same protection as somebody who's been here long enough to qualify for federal FMLA?
I'm not quite sure I follow the question. When you mean imbalance, can you specify?
So like, if I, I'm a man, so it would be paternity leave for me. But I get a job at the village, and my wife was already pregnant when I joined, and then she gives birth, and I've only been here for like, you know, 30 days, so I'm not eligible for FMLA yet, and I have no other leaves. But this is stating on here that you would extend FMLA leave, and I could take the full benefit regardless of that. Is that, do we want to have any sort of, you know, employee must work here so long before they'd be eligible for this?
I mean, from my perspective, we certainly could. My understanding is the reasoning behind this is probably more so with, like, the mothers in mind, because you do need to be employed for 365 days to be FMLA eligible.
Right.
So obviously, you know, do some simple math, it's not out of the realm of possibilities. You have a new employee who, nine months later, is having a child. So I think that's more our logic with it being that way. But obviously, that being said, it's a policy, and much like the compassionate leave, it's up to your discretion how you want to do that.
That would really be my only concern, is if somebody, you know, could come in and they could take advantage of it immediately with, as opposed to somebody who's been, you know, an employee longer and qualified. It's just, I don't, I don't think it's something that we should worry too much about, but I just want to bring up it, so that would be a concern.
Is your concern for both parents, or just a?
It could be both.
Parent, not?
It's, I'm only saying because I'm a man, so I only have experienced paternity leave.
I understand.
And I was denied, I was denied, my daughter was born after I took a job 60 days, and my HR director literally said, "Well, you didn't give birth to your kids, so you don't need to go home and see your child." So I had to work full day, it's when my child was a newborn. So a policy like this, I would have been great, because I would have been eligible to do it. But there are people who may have some concerns if we offer it without any sort of pre-period there, where somebody would have to earn it, so to speak.
Yeah, I think it gets into a tricky question. And my earlier wasn't at you directly for bringing it up, I just meant in general. It's like, oftentimes, we live in a world where many things are created by the male perspective. And I just don't, I think it just leads to like, you're unnecessarily punishing people for their body and what they're capable of. And punishing maybe is a drastic term, but it's just like, not really up to you. And there's a lot of situations where it truly, maybe it's not up to you. So I just, I think it's a great thing we can extend to our, to be a more inclusive employer.
I would note, I mean, this, this isn't a little policy.
Yeah.
This is a major benefit add. Probably of the four we're discussing, the most significant, in terms of change in our policies. I've got notes on our discussion. We've got the recording to reference, and we're happy to do research into your specific questions and bring it back in a couple of weeks, so you can be fully informed and confident on your decision-making.
That'd be great. Our two issues so far seem to be surrogacy, in terms of eligibility, and then, second, overall eligibility in terms of time of employment. And I want to make sure that Tricia and Sam both have a chance to chime in.
Oh, mine's easy, super easy. I just, one suggestion for the parental leave and proof of either the birth or the adoption. I think just because of the size of the staff that you have and the closeness that you are, to demand that with a shell, you might just want to add a "if requested" on there, because I think usually, adoption or birth are pretty well celebrated amongst your team. So to say, "Okay, now show us proof," seems a little bit much.
Bring the baby in.
And not only that, it takes time to receive those documents.
Yeah, it does, it does. Sam, questions?
I don't have any specific questions, other than I support the policy and agree with what's been stayed by everyone else.
Can I just ask that we, next time, to clarify the gestational age? Just if that's going to be at any point, the full amount at any point, or if we want to like tier that? I just.
For the compassionate leave?
Yeah, for compassionately. Yeah, for compassionately. And I know some of them. I can reread this too, but the paid leave was like you can only have it once a year. Let's say you're adopting or fostering, but compassionally, you know, if someone is losing a child unfortunately, more often earlier in pregnancy, that might impact how often, you know, out of their control, they would need this. So I just don't need to play what if all day, but would hope that we could have a little bit of a plan, I guess.
Just a couple of clarifying questions. When you talked about tiering.
I just didn't like.
What are your thoughts on?
Yeah, like I I'm not entirely sure, and I don't have a lot of, I guess, even like documentation or like what to do with the remains if it's like before twenty weeks or after twenty weeks. So I'm not sure if we want a line or, you know, like how far along in the pregnancy the child is lost. So you know, if it was, yeah, if someone is you know, struggling through this and, you know, repeatedly losing children a few times a year, you know, I'm not trying to say that, you know, get them enough, but make sure it's clear that it's not someone's.
And we've all had friends that have experienced it.
Yeah, I mean, you're definitely helping us hone in. Helping us hone in on areas where there's question, and hopefully a few couple more weeks of research will get you some better clarification.
So our surrogacy eligibility in terms of employment, gestational age for compassionately, do we have any other questions around this? I'm glad I'm very glad that you put this all together and that we're pushing this forward.
Yeah, I've got a few other notes. Your points are clear. And again, we've got the recording, which we'll review again and come back on this policy. I wouldn't recommend voting on this.
Yeah.
This particular one tonight. I think we can have a better document and answer your questions in a couple of weeks.
Right. So should we go over the other?
Yeah.
Recommended changes?
The other recommended changes are still the other the other three are those that we'd hoped you'd consider this evening for approval. The second one is payout of unused vacation. I will say that we we provide a good vacation benefit and the department heads and I routinely encourage its use. We believe our employees are better when they're when they're good humans and being good humans involves taking time to recoup, spend time with others, et cetera. So we urge and push use of vacation. That's a relatively constant effort on our part. There are circumstances on an annual basis, as you saw in 2013, for example, seventeen of our employees were unable for one reason or another. Typically, it's simply workload. Unable to use all of their vacation above and beyond the forty hours that we allow to carry over on an annual basis to the next year. And I would say that it's an annual question I get from at least an employee, if not more about what are my options with that balance? My gosh, Todd. You you pick this. I'll look at Carly. Oh, my gosh, we've had presidential elections. I wish I could have used my vacation. Good example. And there's others just like that. Others might be coming up through the end of the year, and the public works crews are find themselves in repeat storms one after another when they had anticipated vacation in December, you know, something like that's another circumstance. What we're looking at at is something, not a lot, but something to recognize that loss of vacation benefit that we'd offered. And as it's laid out here, that would be to provide a cash out of twenty five percent of that remaining vacation balance above forty hours, not to exceed twenty hours total paid out. So that that's the proposal we're asking the board to consider for implementation into the handbook this year and going forward. In other words, this would apply then to employees who have twenty fourteen balances that would qualify.
Okay, Tricia.
Just a quick question. Remind me again, what for a tenured employee, what the maximum vacation is each year that they could earn? Like, is it ten years at your top?
I believe it's you're asking how how long does it take to get to the maximum?
What's the most that an employee could earn?
It's five weeks. It might be six. So you start out with three three weeks, and then every three years of service, you get another half week. And then it stops growing after fifteen years. So.
You actually just modified this policy about a year ago? I'm trying to pull up.
Trying to do some quick math. That's either five weeks or six weeks. What I just it stops after fifteen. So it goes up every three years, stops after fifteen. That's the last increase. So I think that's six weeks.
I think the new max is six. Before it was five weeks.
Okay.
I believe. Do you want me to keep searching for that?
No, no, that's good enough.
I believe that's correct, but.
I just I just want to kind of get an idea of there.
All right. Other questions, Nyla?
I I follow what you know, we're looking at. But I guess it bothers me that people have earned vacation coming and they use it or they lose it, and we're looking at it being a portion of it instead of all of it. I don't think they should be able to take all their vacation or, you know, not take vacation and get all their vacation time. But I'm wondering if something such as if you're you're allowed to have three weeks vacation and you need to lose use two and you can receive compensation up for one. And if it's a third of ever how many days you have, you get paid out completely. I don't know why you lose it or lose it.
Well, I'll from my perspective, the thought is not to create an incentive to sit on and bank vacation.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is if they if they have to use it at either they either have to use it or they receive payment in full of whatever they don't use a third of it, up to a third of it. Then they would still receive it and as an hourly pay instead of losing it. It's it's one of their benefits. There's monetary value to it. That's how I see it.
We can still roll over, correct? So.
You can you can roll over up to forty hours to the following year.
Two, you could roll that third over. If you have four weeks of vacation, you could and you only use two, you could roll one week over and then get compensated for a portion of that fourth week.
No, what we're what we're saying is your first your first your first choice, not choice. The first act is the forty to roll over. Let's say you have sixty hours. Automatically, your forty rolls to the following year. And if there is stuff left, it's that portion that's left that you weren't even able to roll over that rather than losing, you would receive a portion of payout.
Okay. Right.
But it's not all of the extra portion. It's twenty five percent of the remaining portion. Is that what you're saying?
Twenty five percent of that remaining portion above the forty hours that gets rolled over.
And are you saying we should just pay them for up minimum twenty? What there is left?
Correct.
Instead of like get rid of the twenty five percent.
Right. Because it's a benefit. And what's the, I don't know, I I just have a an issue with any employee losing benefits.
Well, to be clear, what what's happening now, Nyla, is any hours over forty are forfeited completely without any. So and and I'm I mean, believe me, if you want to talk about fifty percent or 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 one hundred percent of an amount, that's fine. My only the concern I I pose is maintaining some sort of limit threshold so as not to create the incentive to not use.
I agree, because vacations are very important for employee health and well being. But at the same time, if for some reason they cannot utilize that vacation because of workload or things going on, then they should not be penalized when they could. It would not work for our village for them to take that time. And I'm not saying, you know, there there has to be a limit on it. But I think they should be compensated at a hundred percent of so many hours. And whatever, you know, whatever we decide, if they're getting three weeks vacation and they have to and they should use two and they can carry over one, let it let them carry it over at a hundred percent.
They can carry it over at a hundred percent right now, but not get paid out.
They can get paid out, not carried over, because carrying it over could create a situation where we end up having a lot of vacation time accrued, and then someone wants, you know, it could cost us a lot.
Sam?
I don't have a problem a whole lot with this policy as it's worded. My mother is often in a similar circumstance very year very similarly, most years at her public sector job where basically ultimately, it is the goal. We want to incentivize those employees to take advantage of their vacation time. I do think it is important to allow some flexibility in special cases, like in her example, there was a period where eight months she was running a city of Madison division that normally has four employees, just herself. And because of that situation, they allowed her to carry over. I think they let her extra week to ten days because of that circumstance, she was simply unable to take her vacation time that she normally would.
Aaron?
Yeah, also in favor of this, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to just getting rid of the twenty five percent, but keeping the maximum twenty hours. Yeah, I don't want to incentivize like not taking vacations, but if you're not taking vacations because you're helping the village, I don't want you to not be able to spend your non work time doing what you like getting paid, you know, being able to spend that on whatever's going to keep you going, I guess. And yes, we're like, this is a new thing, easing into it, but if it's, I I'm curious, I guess, how much, how many hours these employees have, if it is.
Yeah, of the seventeen.
Twenty, or if it's
Yeah.
five, or it's like, is it going to even be worth it, like giving them ninety dollars or something?
The example of the from twenty twenty three, the seventeen employees who had hours, I believe I believe there are only two that had more than twenty hours. I believe I can I remember.
You mean more than twenty hours after you apply the twenty five percent?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep. Very, very few would see would.
Which means eighty hours that they were going to lose or more.
Each individual employee was going to lose eighty or more?
Yes.
Okay.
So now they would get paid for twenty of those.
Okay.
But a lot of people have pretty small balances, but there are circumstances every year where there's more sizable for just a couple.
Less than a handful of people.
Yeah.
Would be in that category.
Joe?
I think this is an improvement. But I don't particularly like it. I would much rather have people actually using their vacation time. I would be more inclined to perhaps give them an option to carry over more or have an exception where they can apply to carry over more. I fully understand what Nyla is saying, and we don't want to, you know, have them lose benefits. But the way the payout on here works, I'm just not thrilled with.
I would just like to make another comment, and I don't want employees to be penalized for doing a good job.
Nyla? Yeah, thank you, Joe. Robert?
Yeah. So do we have areas of the village that we have problems with people just not being able to have time to take? Like, is it always the same areas that we run into this?
Do you have a perspective on? Yeah, there's probably a few where they just it's difficult every year despite their best efforts. I think sometimes, in particular, it's some of your salaried staff that, you know, have an obligation to fulfill their fulfill their duties regardless of what they're paid and and they they pursue that vigorously. I know that the Joe to your comment, the idea of allowing more carryover, that becomes a perpetual a perpetual circumstance then. It already sort of is for, I mean, I'm also one of the typical forty hours gets carried over, and I even find that that tricky to use up on an annual basis.
Do they have to use that before they use new?
Yeah, you have to whatever's carried over has to be used by
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. So yes, use that first.
And this is the I I maybe missed it when you were introducing it. This was when we spoke with staff, this is what they would like to see, or was this just an idea that we're advancing?
No, I I think the reason for pursuing this was because of the typical questions I get from staff when I if I sit down with staff for a check in a one on one, what's a thing that kind of creates heartburn? This will be one of the top five things I hear. So I'm trying to address one of those things.
The heartburn is that they're losing the time. Have we? Has there been any consideration into maybe paying any overages into like an FMLA leave bank for future use? In case they have an incident in the future that they would then need to draw against before they would go into unpaid FMLA?
Essentially, it's putting a special category of accumulated vacation leave that can.
But it would specifically be for FMLA. It wouldn't be I'm going to Fiji and I need an extra week. It would be like I broke my leg and I'm out of sick time.
Well, conversion to sick time, perhaps. I mean, that that probably is an alternate approach. Employee has forty extra hours that they'll otherwise lose. Converted to sick leave, I don't think there's any reason why that wouldn't, you know, be a legal approach. Seems like a reasonable policy approach, and then it can be used, just like sick leave can now for paid during FMLA.
I would only say with that is that a lot of people who maybe would be in the situation are already maxed on the amount of sick leave that they can accumulate.
Which is why we're saying FMLA rather than sick leave, because it's a different category.
If it was a completely different category that people could accumulate, but otherwise, I think they would they would, we wouldn't convert it to sick leave. Because I don't think that would be helpful for a lot of people.
I my my concern is generally that I don't like incentivizing not. I I get it that there are some people who work in positions that they don't, but I feel like that's more of a we still would need to look at resources being made available for people to not do it. Like I I heard, you know, Sam's example of you know, his mom being one person in apartment four. Well, that's the city of Madison didn't properly staff their thing. That's not necessarily I don't think she would have chosen to be the only person working in there. I I would really struggle just with doing a flat payout because I feel like it's it sends the wrong message. But again, that's why I was asking if staff had been asked on this, because if this is truly what staff desire, then I think we should consider it. I think a cap is very important. Working in private industry long enough, I've known plenty of people who have feasted on, you know, doing this where it's just like, I'm just never take it. They don't want to take vacation, and then they get a huge payout at some point. And so as long as there's caps on it, then I'd be fine with it.
Yeah, we used to do that when we were young and broke.
Yeah, I did too. I never took vacation when I was a kid because I knew I was going to get paid out.
You got to pay out every year. Yeah. Yeah.
And I I'm even hearing again, we can bring this back in a couple of weeks and and chew on it some more. I'm hearing even maybe enhancing this policy to include a choice. Maybe it's a choice of some version of cash payout or or a roll into a new version of paid leave.
I would definitely have to check that out because you're usually able like with the sick leave conversion type things, you can't have a choice. It makes it taxable for everybody. So we would just have to
Oh, right.
Somehow do some tax research on that.
I think that's why I've seen the FMLA before because of the taxing purpose. That's why I was kind of asking.
Tricia?
I've seen it before, and I can't remember if this was in Riverside or somewhere, but I think there was a special circumstance, and it had to be approved by the manager, by whoever, like by the end of September, October, like there was a a known situation where the person wasn't going to be able to use their sick time. So there was either an agreement that it would be rolled over, they could use it in the next year or paid out. And I think it was like a fifty percent payout or something like that, but it was it was definitely a defined or documented situation where the manager agreed, I can't have you taking vacation for this amount of time because we need you to fill this. Or the manager says, no, you're just take off December or something. There was like an agreement and acknowledgement. So it wasn't just trying to to bank it.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the curveballs because they all sound like they're they're curving towards employee friendliness.
Yes, yeah.
So again, we've taken notes. I'd love to do a little more a little more work on this prior to your next. So, again, we've taken notes, I'd love to do a little more, a little more work on this prior to your next meeting.
I think it's helpful. I'll say, I come down with you and Nyla, I mean, a one-to-one payout might create a pretty strong incentive, but a one hour for every four you're giving up also feels a little thin in terms of what people are giving up. I don't know what the right answer is, this is a hard one. Ideally, people can take their vacation, yeah.
I think it's helpful for us to know, not necessarily every specific situation, but like, yeah, who is this impacting? Like, I don't want to penalize like Public Works, if we have a crazy winter, like get some cash out and treat yourself to some ice dinners and you get back from plowing, I don't know, like I just want to, yeah, be able to know like what scenarios is this going to impact, like?
I would say I don't think this policy is going to preclude, no matter what we do with it, it's going to preclude you from taking extra special action on extra unique circumstances. So, and we've approved unique circumstances before on one-offs and I, it doesn't keep you from doing that. And I think that's kind of where you're going with it, really.
Yeah. All right, next one.
Bad, betting 0 for 2, let's see.
Well, I think, I think
No, this is good. And I mean, I will say, maybe just for, for folks watching, this is a lot of discussion for the village board on seemingly, you know, you know, personnel policies, the village doesn't have a personnel committee. Maybe other cities of our size or bigger do, and a lot of this then would get like smacked around really good in that sort of session, but instead you are, you collectively are the personnel committee for the village, so we're spending this time, it's a good time spent.
All right.
Okay. I'm going to take a break talking and turn the next one over to Jared and Chief Kreitzman on sick leave conversion for police committee. Jared, you want to?
Yep, I can, I can. Do you want to kick it off? You want me to kick off? All right.
Bring us home.
Yeah, so here we have a discrepancy that was highlighted during last round of promotions within the police department. So our bargaining unit employees, i.e. those in the union, have a benefit as part of their bargaining agreement where upon retirement, they get a HRA conversion. So any unused sick leave gets converted into a balance based on their hourly rate, that goes into an HRA that they can use following that. And to be clear, this is for retirements, not resignations, I just want to be very clear about that. However, all the other staff in the village no longer have that benefit that stopped after May 16 of 2013, and covered under that are the command staff in the police department, and that's where the issue comes in, is that your, if you were hired in Bywannakee Police Department after May 16, 2013, you are forfeiting a pretty nice retirement benefit if you are promoted into a command position, meaning a sergeant or lieutenant. So what we're looking to do is basically close that gap and change our handbook to expand that HRA benefit back to the command staff in the police department. And some of the attachments we have here show, Adam did a lot of really great research. I believe it's on page, so here, page 34 of 37, it's page 7 of 9 of that section. This is a tabulation of the research from the comparable communities, just highlighting very briefly how we stack up, and as you can see, it's pretty stark. Both with what our sick leave bank max is, as well as how we do a payout or a retirement benefit. And actually, that reminds me, that was one of the other elements here, was just that we'd also be looking to increase the sick leave bank max from the 480 up to the 1188 to match the bargaining unit. So really, this is looking to get rid of a disincentive for people to consider promotion, because I think one of the last things you want to do is you, you want to, you, you have a clear avenue of a career track within the department, but you're actually creating a disincentive to do it. So we're looking to correct that, so, Adam, did I leave anything out?
No, I, no, I think you hit it all really on the head, and we did see this the last time around, just last year, when we were running a promotional process where we had people being promoted that were giving up this benefit, they're actually, to an extent, almost kind of being punished a little bit to agree to take on more responsibility. Another part is when you're in patrol, you're gaining seniority towards better hours and things like that, when you get promoted to sergeant, that's the next level likely. You then start over your seniority, so we're asking them to start over your seniority in a new group, which a lot of times may mean working nights much longer or certain events that you don't have enough seniority to get off, and we're taking away this benefit. There's, there's a couple of things that were kind of out of whack between the two, one of them was the vacation part, which you guys addressed last year, which I appreciate because that was another one where you're getting promoted and depending on where you were in your career, actually taking less vacation time to take a promotion. We, I would say we've probably known this was coming, when the village first made this change, most people that were being promoted were being grandfathered in, and now it's kind of been enough time that has passed to where we're starting to see this impact where we've convinced some people to do it, but we're definitely hearing the rumblings of, hey, that was a big benefit to give up, to basically stand alongside the same exact people who are getting a different, a different benefit, so you know, if I'm, I'm looking ahead, we probably have two sergeant positions and at least one lieutenant position in the next five years, so just, like I said, trying to, try not to punish people for agreeing to, to take on more responsibility and, and do more good things for the village, so.
All right, what questions do we have? Robert, can I start on your end?
Yeah, this time I actually don't, I think this is a change that I don't really have much of an issue with, I think it, they should not be punished for wanting to advance in the ranks, so, yep.
Joe?
I think this is kind of a no-brainer, but one of the big questions I have is if we have people that have made that leap into those positions, is there a calculation of what they've perhaps given up, or?
I don't think anybody is maxed out at the 480 yet that has made that, maybe one of them was. Out of the two, I have two sergeants right now that don't have this benefit. But early in their careers, I think they would be able to build it back up. I think they would just be happy to get the benefit and less worried probably about the back correcting, it would be such a short period of time since they've been promoted.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron?
That was my question, and thanks for pulling together all the same.
Yeah, thank you. Sam?
No questions, we should definitely do this.
Tricia?
No, and I actually think, you know, I know this is comparing it against other police departments, but, you know, a lot of you know, you've got competition with other agencies, particularly federal agencies as well that you need to keep up with, so I don't know why we wouldn't do this, this makes sense.
I agree that we need to do it to keep and retain people in, in our police department, but at the same time, I want to make a statement because I am correct in saying that other municipal employees do not get their sick leave paid out, correct? If it's accumulated, is that correct?
Well, nobody gets it paid out, but converting it to the HRA, yes, there, anyone hired after that 2013 date just lose their, their bank.
They did what?
They, anyone hired after 2013, which some of these people that we're discussing would have lost it. But there's many people, yes, that were hired after that date that don't convert their sick leave upon retirement.
Okay, so we're talking about employees throughout the municipality?
Okay.
Correct. I just want to make sure I was correct on that, and I know that state laws have created a situation where it's almost like we have a two-tiered public employee system where law enforcement receives a different level of benefits than public employees, and I just want to say that I feel that it's unfortunate that this happened. I'm not saying the police department should not receive this, but I am saying that I feel that all public employees should be on the same level when it comes to these things, and we have no control over it, I realize that. But I just wanted to state this at this time, thanks.
To Nyla's point, we do, in fact, have some control over this provision. In, back in 2013, there, there was a lot going on, it was on the, the heels or even after Act 10 was all approved and there was a lot of attention on post-employment benefit balances. Now, Renee and the finance team and the village board have done a really nice job to plan for those post-employment benefits and we're accounting for it really well. What I know is that we weren't unlike many, many public employers to make that shift back in 2013, but we are seeing a trend in our labor attorney feedback that we've received. It's showing that municipal employers are returning to at least some level of, of compensation for accumulated sick leave. I would say that administratively, we're still reviewing those provisions and what the employment marketplace looks like that we're competing with, and I would speculate that as we bring more handbook updates to you over the course of this year, you'll see, we'll have a discussion about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to that point, though, I, I think, I think it still is important to differentiate, and I can't remember what the, the name of it is, but especially for police officers or those that are kind of putting their lives at risk when they go to work every day, there is a bit of a differentiation, I think that has to be considered as part of the benefits that go with that.
All right, I'm in favor of this as well, I think we're all in agreement here, so you're one and two.
Three.
One and three.
One out of three.
One out of three?
I think that's, I think that's 333, we have a chance for 500. With the last, with the last, thanks, chief.
And yeah, thank you for putting all this information together.
You can, you can vote on those you want to approve at the, I mean, you're welcome to take it separately, but I think we can combine it at the end.
Should we do it at the end?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The final one is a modification to our employee volunteer policy. And Bill might help me with this, but there are, there's two things we want to address in this change. One is to continue to have a commitment to allowing our employees who serve as an emergency volunteer on fire or EMS to be responsive. In particular, to be responsive during the day when the volunteer availability is at its least for the departments. But with the intent so that we can support the effort to get the first rig out the door as quickly as possible to provide excellent initial response time. Now, what we're modifying here is an attempt to do that but limiting the amount of employees from a given department who can respond to two, which we believe is an effort to continue to maintain that commitment to help the department get a, get a vehicle out the door and get, get prompt response. The second issue we're addressing, which, that we're addressing is one that Bill has heard from his communications with members of the Public Works Department, is kind of the high and dry outcome that our non-volunteer Public Works members are left in when there's there's, you know, the beepers go off and a batch of, batch of crew members leave. So that's become disruptive for the Public Works Department. It's become a challenge within management of the department. So what this modification allows us to do is essentially set up a rotating schedule for assignment to respond to volunteers. Spreading that opportunity amongst the members of the department who are volunteers as well, as well as allowing us to be strategic in how we assign staff. So for example, if you're like, if you're the two employees in Public Works who are assigned to volunteer, volunteer response assignment, you won't be put on, you know, maybe a combined crew where you have the chance to leave other crew members high and dry at a job site. Bill, you can help me out here, but is that, is that making sense? So we can be, we can be better at those assignments to limit the impact on the village department operations.
Yeah, I just basically further that too, is, is this way, we're, we're not having, you know, we'd only have two people that would be at the, the call, we're leaving the two non-firefighters wondering what to do or trying to finish the job that they're working on. This was brought up through reviews with all the people out at the shop, and it pretty much was said by a lot of them that, you know, that was their biggest concerns as much as they have fully support what, what those guys do that are on the department, but at times when they're trying to get a project done and and they're waiting for their partner to, to get that finished up at the end, so they could have it done in a timely fat or so, timely manner, so it's just one of the things we talked about, we actually met with all the firemen that, that we have on staff at Public Works. They were, we read this whole thing and they all felt it was a fair and equitable policy in accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish.
All right, let's start in the middle, Aaron, do you have any questions?
No, I'm excited and I think this is a good idea and a good way to move forward.
All right, Sam?
No questions.
Tricia?
Nope, and I appreciate that you put the, you know, special circumstances language in there too, I think that's important, it kind of covers what my concerns would have been.
Chill out.
You caught us off guard, I think. My only question, I guess, would be if you've got, you know, five guys that are on the fire department, if they have different skills, how do you determine which two? You know, if, if there's a need for a certain skill that
For either us or the fire department?
Well, either or.
No, at this point, everybody out there should be able to do just about every job, I'm big on cross-training, making sure everybody can do everything.
Okay.
And as far as skills related to firefighting or what their rank is, I'll, I'll, I'll say as a reminder, they're public works employees first.
Sure.
That, that's primary obligation. This job is the one that's paying, paying their bills, so regardless of, of rank or talent, we want to provide equal opportunities for those volunteers to have the chance at the call.
At the same time, if your house is on fire, you know, you're probably caring a whole lot more about the fire department than Public Works at that moment. So, yeah, I don't know, it's a, it's an odd balance.
I get that, and I guess that, that's coupled with an obligation, an obligation that also rests with the fire department.
Yep.
You know, to manage and address their, their staffing needs beyond what, you know, has been accommodation offered by the village, we're not the only employer, by the way, Enders Manufacturing is another one that we're not standing alone as the employers who help in daytime responses, but we, we have a public works function obligation that's, that's been challenged. Hopefully, hopefully this dances, dances the middle of the line pretty well.
I think it does, so, thanks.
All right, and our fire representatives, Nyla?
I think it's a good way to balance the needs of the fire department with the needs of Public Works, I do agree that their responsibility to Public Works is their full-time job, but we also need to look at continuing the volunteerism in our fire department, so this, this should balance it out pretty good.
Thanks. Thank you, Nyla. Robert?
So did we, just out of curiosity, did this get in front of the chief over there for his feedback at all?
Well, I will say that two, two of our employees are in command, in command ranks at the department. I think, I think, Bill, you've gotten the impression that that communication has, has
We personally haven't had that conversation, but felt very comfortable with being, in fact, we had two officers that seemed to be in favor of this, that.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because I know that their membership requires that they have to respond to a certain number of calls and things like that, so I'm assuming this would not interfere with that requirement.
The, the requirement is that the, they're required to make a certain number of drills and, and meetings?
Okay.
It doesn't have a requirement on fire calls?
On the actual calls themselves, okay.
Because that'd be kind of hard.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was, I, I thought maybe they were so reliant upon the staff that they were always making sure that was taken care of. I think, I mean, I, I think this is great, I think that we need to move this direction and I, I'm not, I don't have any real issue with it, I know that something that we've discussed for years, well, I've only been here two years, but I, from the very beginning, I've heard that was a concern that Public Works, that that was happening. You had mentioned manufacturer also was, you know, had a lot of staff there, do they, do you know, do, do they have their own policies that pertains to, like something similar to this?
Not that I know, Dean, I'm not aware what their policy is.
Okay, just out of curiosity, not, not that I would necessarily say we should copy it. My final question was just, and this is, I, I chuckle just because I'm not sure if there are any, do we even have any EMS volunteers still in Public Works?
Not in Public Works, no.
Okay.
Not aware of any.
And any actually in, in the organization as well.
Did we want to maybe just update the language just to indicate this is just a fire department and not EMS since EMS has? No?
I, I would suggest leaving it EMS in it because you never know when someone who volunteers at EMS may get a job with Public Works.
The volunteers at EMS at this point though are just the drivers, right? Okay.
That doesn't mean that EMS may move back into other, other aspects of volunteerism. I, I'm not, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, at this point, I'm, I guess I would leave it as well.
Okay. If it's not hurting anything, I just, I wasn't sure if it was just one of those things that was a legacy item rather than what we're doing.
All right. I have no further comments.
All right. Any other comments? No? Thank you guys for the work on this. I think this is a, a good move in the right direction.
Yeah.
Based on the discussion, it, it looks like if you look at the recommended motion, just cross out which, let's see, paid parental and compassionate leave and payout of unused vacation at year end and simply read the remainder of that recommended motion.
All right. Will you do that?
Yeah. I move to authorize the village administrator to update the employee handbook as proposed, which relates to the sick leave conversion for police command staff and emergency volunteers.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Other than I will say that the remaining items will be brought back to us and we'll continue to work on those. All right.
Yeah, I, I think we could be back in a couple of weeks.
Great. All right. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, discuss and take action on purchase agreement for 105 East Second Street. And we'll present this and then contemplate going into closed session.
Yep. Brian's prepared to give an update.
So, sorry, my voice is not with me today. I, I sent an email to you all with a proposed commercial offer to purchase an attendum that, you know, the, the commercial offer to purchase itself is, is the standard language that anyone would use for, for purchasing commercial property, which is what 105 East Second Street is. And then there's an attendum too. And my preference would be to discuss it in closed session as there's a number of contingencies that I believe we would want to include in the offer. And, and they just would be able to, want to be able to walk through those. They are certainly terms and conditions of an agreement. So there's certainly a valid basis to convene in closed session on that. But if it's the board, board's preference to discuss it in open session, obviously I'll do that too.
Right. And Brian, from a procedural standpoint, since item number four is also a closed session item, do we want to review that and then contemplate going into closed session?
Sure. If you, I mean, if you want me to, I can just provide a quick update. But yeah, I mean, I think then we would vote on both items separately to go into closed session.
Okay. Would you mind providing an update on number four?
Before we switch to the, to the Westport item, there is some information about the potential funding source for purchase as it relates to funds within TID number eight. Brian, would you recommend that discussion in closed session as well? Or can I sort of lay that out for the board here and open?
No, I think, I think, I think you can talk about that in open session because that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's good. So the, the offer or the published, the published listing has the property listed at 600,000. I believe that's the number it's listed at. And we've had some discussions with the owner and we want to discuss those discussions with the village board in closed session regarding a price that you may or may not want to actually offer at. But how do we pay for it is a good question. And I, the, the, the source that staff would recommend and put forward to you would be to utilize TID number eight, which specifically identifies the purchase of property as an acceptable use for TID balances. So Renee helped me get the latest and greatest information on TID eight and its, its cash standing. In 2025, that district will have available to it approximately $391,000. Every year that cumulative balance increases as the district takes in more money than it's owing on, on whatever it has outstanding. Couple MROs and a village bond issuance. So over the next two additional years, we will see that cumulative, cumulative, that's a tough word. Cumulative balance increase in '26 to 530 something thousand and then into 2027 to 683,000. So what we see the district being able to do over time is funding a, a portion of the purchase and or reimbursing those funds, reimbursing the village for the purchase cost. And let's just say, I'm, this isn't, I'm not saying this is what we're going to offer, but let's say it's 600,000. There is potential within three years of TID balance earnings to cover that entire amount. So a couple of pieces of information about the district. Through, from '26 to 2033, we see an annual increase in that balance of about 150 to 190,000 annually. In other words, the district's doing very well right now based on its obligations and its increment. The district is scheduled or statutorily required to close in 2046. But based on current circumstances, no other projects, no other change in new value, it's projecting to close in 2034 or 12 years early. Should the board choose to use TID eight funds for a purchase of this building or any other for that matter, you would likely see that projected closure year move out. Move out a year or multiple years. And I don't have, depending on what you decide to do, we can talk more about how that then moves the, moves the closure year. So that's, do you have any additional information? Or are there any questions about TID eight or funding approach?
Any questions for open session? Robert?
So this is the, this is the district. That's the overlay of five, right?
Right. It's, it's called the, it's actually called the Huffdie Project District related to when that project opposite Quick Trip went in.
Okay. So to make it clear for anybody watching, it's, we are going to go into closed session to debate the use of using the TID funds to purchase this property?
No, 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 no. We're, we're, the only thing that we can discuss in closed session is the terms and conditions of the offer that we may, that if you authorize it would be provided to the property owner. To the extent that you want to discuss that policy decision, Robert, that you just identified, in other words, using TIF funding for a purchase of property versus using some other form of funding if the village wants to pursue it, that would be a discussion that you would want to have an open session.
Yep. And that's why, that's why I asked and why we're having this open conversation with you now.
Okay. So we're going to have that now then is that, I, I was just concerned we were about to head into closed. That's why I was.
Yeah. I feel like this is chicken and the egg. Like we have to decide we're going to purchase the property at a particular price before we talk about how we might fund it. But I see the utility of having the conversation now.
I, I guess my concern is just because it, as of yet, we still don't really know what, what the intent is with the property. So I'm going into closed session.
Well, can, if I may, I think one option you have is to glow, go into closed session, discuss some of the terms and conditions, but then reconvene into open session if you want to have a larger policy discussion. Once you have a chance to learn some of the, there's one contingency in particular that may impact how you want to use the property in the future, which then it sounds like may impact how you want to fund it if you in fact are going to acquire the land.
I mean, that feels logical then to come out of closed session to discuss if we are making a decision to purchase the property or to make an offer to purchase the property, then to come back into open session and discuss how we might do that. Does that feel logical to everyone? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. And thank you for this update. And that we did it now while people are still paying attention and then after closed session. All right. Number four, let's take that on and then come back and vote on closed session for items three and four. Discuss and take action on the town of Westport. Notice of intent to incorporate petition. Is that back to you, Brian?
Sure. I'm, I'm willing to. The, the village at a staff level and with Christian has held meetings with the town of Westport on December 19th and again today. The discussions have been essentially, is there a, you know, let me step back. The, as far as I'm aware, the town where Westport has already also had discussions with the city of Middleton, Village de Forest and City of Madison. Obviously all communities are impacted by the notice of intent to incorporate a petition that has been filed by Westport. And the party in, as Westport has acknowledged, certainly has the ability, it certainly has the ability to talk to the communities to see how they feel about it. And in particular, as it relates to the boundaries or their adjustments that they would like to see. And so those have, have been the discussions between Wanakee and Westports. And this is again, all related to this, this matter is currently, well, I guess, it was at Circuit Court. The Circuit Court has issued an order to move the petition to the incorporation review board. We're kind of in a holding pattern right now as indicated in the letter that Westport sent to the incorporation review board as Westport is trying to continue to have these discussions with the communities because those discussions could potentially impact, you know, what happens at the incorporation review board. And so again, the basis for the board to go into closed session is so staff can update the board and then get guidance on the board on future discussions with Westport related to this, what I would call quasi litigation.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right. So let's go back to number three and vote on whether or not we want to go into closed session. So the village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So with that, do we have a motion to go into closed session for item number three? I will move to, go ahead.
I was going to move to go into closed session.
All right. And I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Carla, roll call vote please.
Joseph Sussberger?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Tricia Brown?
Yes.
Robert McPherson?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Christian Rungy?
Yes. All right. Item number four, discuss and take action on town of Westport notice of intent to incorporate petition. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.851G for the purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the village who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the village with respect to litigation in which it is likely or in which it is or is likely to become involved. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. I would like to move to go into closed session to discuss and take action on the town of Westport notice of intent to incorporate.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Roll call vote please.
Robert McPherson?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Tricia Brown?
Yes.
Joseph Sussberger?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Christian Rungy?
Yes. All right. With that, we will move into closed session and reconvene in open session if there is anything to vote on.
One note to those watching, we'll be ending this Zoom, this Zoom recording now. It'll be on YouTube. However, we, if the board does reconvene in open session, that won't be seen as part of this recording. Instead, we will put those results in the official minutes from this meeting. We will also be starting a separate Zoom for the closed session portion. So legal counsel can join us.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming.